So I will call our work session to order of October 11th, 2022. We have two items. One is with the Transportation Commission. That will be our second item to review speed limits. But we will start with Emerald Ash Bore Removal Assistance Program, and I'll pass it to Public Works Director Kristin Asher.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members and commissioners for being here tonight. We have two items that we're looking for guidance on, the Emerald Ash Bore program that we have introduced as part of the ARPA funding. Scott Colzer, our Public Works Analyst, and Chris Link, our Deputy Director, is going to be there to present for that. But we're looking for some solid guidance on that program. And we do have a recommendation that we'd like you to consider, and then talk through some other things that have come up since the idea was born. And then the second item, like you mentioned, is going to be the local speed limits. And then Ben Manabag, our Transportation Engineer, will present that item. And then Chief Hanthorn is here as well to help with that discussion. Then we'll ask the commissioners to come sit up at the table for that. But we do want to get solid guidance on the EAB, so I'm just going to turn it over to Scott. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Kristin, Katie, Mayor, council members, and commissioners. My name is Scott Colzer, Administrative Analyst, Public Works Department. We're here to review the EAB Removal Assistance Program, which is one of the 12 ARPA programs that were selected at the September 13th meeting. $400,000 in ARPA funds were allocated to this program. The program's going to be targeted to homeowners that have an income less than or equal to 300% of the federal poverty guidelines for Hennepin County. The goal of the program is to assist private property owners, single-family homeowners, with some of the costs associated with removing dead or dying ash trees on their private property. We estimate there are roughly 5,100 private ash trees in Richfield. That amounts to a need of roughly...
Sorry.
So, we estimate 5,100 private ash trees remain in Richfield. And based on some math we did, that's around a $19 million need that's going to come up in the next few years for removal costs if they're not treated. And then we did some math also, and based on those ARPA income guidelines for program eligibility, there's roughly 1,500 single-family homeowners, we think, in Richfield that would be eligible for this program. The project timeline, like Kristin said, we're just seeking some guidance on a few outstanding questions today. And then from there, we will develop our program application forms, run it through legal, city attorney, and then hopefully begin promoting the program this winter because ash trees are best removed in the winter months. So... Some key considerations to frame these questions we have for you is just what we have available as staff capacity versus the volume of residents served. We do not intend to hire anyone or hire any consultants to administer this program, so we're going to be doing it in-house with our existing staff, which is effectively myself, Chris, and Forester Joe Clark. And then we also need you to weigh the volume of residents served versus the impact of the assistance they're going to get from the city. We could give everyone a small amount of money and not have any real impact on their lives, but we want to actually make a difference here. So... I'm just going to highlight the four questions. We need to decide on a ratio of the cost share. That's how much will the city contribute and how much will the homeowner chip in? There's some scenarios there which we will revisit, but it kind of frames the issue. We can help a little bit and hit a lot of houses, or we can help a lot and hit fewer houses. And that $3,793 is roughly the average cost of a private ash tree removal based on our special assessments from this year. And then with that, should there be a cost cap, such as $2,000, $4,000, $5,000 maximum contribution that the city would put forth? Kind of small potatoes items here, but should we retroactively assist those property owners that had trees removed in 2022 and elected to have it assessed to their property taxes? Had this program been rolled out in February, a lot of the homeowners, we think, on this list would have chosen to have assistance given if they were eligible. And then should we require or encourage the planting of replacement trees on private property as part of accepting funds through this effort? Based on those considerations, and talking with Chris and Kristin, and thinking about our capacity here, we're recommending a 75-25 cost share. So that's 75% contribution for the removal costs from the city and 25% chip in from the homeowner. We are not advocating for any cap on city contributions just because the additional effort it will put upon staff and the fact that the costs are so divergent with removal on certain properties. Some homes have three or four ash trees. So a $2,000 cap on a property like that would not necessarily help greatly, but it would make more money available, I guess, to other homeowners. We recommend retroactively assisting eligible property owners who are on next year's assessment roll. And we recommend encouraging but not requiring replacement trees be planted on private property, largely because we do not have the staff capacity to chase these folks down year after year and try to compel them to plant a tree in their backyard. So with that, I'll turn it over to Chris if he wants to elaborate on any of those.
Yeah, I just have a couple of things to add. The cap part of it, you know, the average is 30, what was it, $3,700 per removal, but that escalates very, very fast when there's multiple trees, or if that tree requires a crane to remove the tree. So on our roll right now, there's at least three trees that are above $9,000. So that's why we kind of get to that cap part. It does escalate very, very fast, and every property is different. And the encouraging replacement trees, that's something we do right now. We do plan on initiating a tree sale in the very, very near future where residents could buy a smaller tree to plant on their property. So that's something that we plan to hopefully roll out this spring if we can.
So I guess with that, council members, open it up for discussion. Questions, if you want to pick apart any of these ideas?
Questions, comments from council members? Councilmember Hayford, Sean.
I think the... How many did you say would have been eligible from the people who did it in 2022? Did you estimate how many that was, if we did do it retroactive?
We don't know where they would come in those income guidelines. Yeah, we haven't been offered it to anybody yet.
I guess, I think that's what concerns me the most, of our intent is to get more of these trees down. And if we are going to go with it, so you're saying 70% is city, 25% is owner, right? So even that, in your estimate, is 141 properties. And then if you're also subtracting even 30, or whatever that happened in 2022. I understand the like fairness argument, but then somebody took it down the year before and they're going to feel cut off. I think no matter what, there's going to be a line. And to me, it makes sense to have the line be now, just because we have this limited funding. And we're going to, by staff recommendation, do quite a bit of the amount, and we want to get as many trees down and as many property owners assisted as possible. So I guess that's the only thing I'm really uncomfortable with. I also just wanted to note, I see in the actual report, it says what those numbers are, to get an idea of how much. So a one-person household that's 300% of federal poverty is a $38,000 income. Is that right?
I have it...
Councilmember, I threw that out the back end of this thing here.
Oh, thanks. Because it was just helpful for me, like, how big is a $4,000 expense for somebody at that income? And that is a lot of, yeah, $4,000, that's more than 10% of your gross. Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor, or Maria. My concern along those lines is with regards to the cap. Just because we already capped the price, the fact that some families might experience the burden disproportionately and their income is capped would lead me to think that those are the folks that probably need the help the most because they're not necessarily going to have more resources. So I'd be more interested in helping people that have extraordinary fees and have limited income than... So I just want to throw that out there, just to have some concerns about the cap.
So if I'm hearing you right, you're recommending no cap?
Is that what the recommendation says?
Yep, yep.
Oh, no, thank you. Maybe I just misheard that.
Okay.
No, I agree with the recommendation then. Thanks.
Mary.
So I was wondering what happens if we have more applications than we have funding? Is it first come, first served? Or is it by income, the people with the greatest need get the help? Or how does that work?
So initially, yeah, you're correct. It'd be first come, first served. But we want to target areas that we've seen through our equity toolkit that are below those and in those ranges. We want to target those areas of town first before we expand and see what kind of interest we have in the program. That's the plan as of today.
Just to briefly expand on that, too. So project promotion, we're going to utilize all of our citywide means, probably social media newsletters, maybe get some press traction with this program, because I think it's pretty great, frankly. And then what we would probably do is do some targeted mailings to those census tracts that we know are probably going to have a higher concentration of folks that are eligible before we do a citywide mailing, per se.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. I was wondering how you were targeting. So it's the mailing, the advertising to the people that you think will need it the most?
Yep. So we'll advertise citywide as far as social media and Facebook is concerned, but it's first-class mail service would be those census tracts that are higher concentrations.
Ben?
Thank you. Yeah, I'm generally comfortable with this. I'm somewhat nervous about the fact that if we do start having people who have these $10,000-plus ones, that that's going to severely limit how many we can do, but also clearly, they have a really high need. And I think, I mean, most of our programs that are assistance with some amount of limiting, limited funding, we, it all gets used up as we would hope. But I also would hate for us to put a limit, have not that many people apply and not actually use all of it. And given where these income guidelines are, again, as was previously stated, there's clearly a need. This is not an income that supports an unexpected multiple thousand-dollar expense. My one question, I don't have strong feelings about it, but I just wanted to dig in more about the replacement trees. I had initially, before you'd shared what you'd shared about staff capacity and just the complicatedness of this, would it be possible to... And I guess I don't know how the actual cost is being tracked for people, but if they, when they're submitting their invoice or whatever for the tree, if they also submitted one for their replacement tree, and it was, I don't know what it averages, like $200, like if that could be included? Or if there's a, if it, we could have, like, you could get an additional $250 if you commit to a tree? But does all of that just make it too complicated?
Yeah, the answer, quick answer is yes. It's a little too complicated. Longer answer is, the assessment process is in state statute, and it covers diseased hazardous trees only. It doesn't cover the cost for replacement trees. That's something that goes on the homeowner. But state statute specifically says that we can assist with only diseased or hazardous trees. So that's where we lose out a little bit on this. And I would absolutely love to do a one-for-one, two-for-one replacement if we could, but unfortunately, we can't.
So, sorry, follow-up question. This is maybe a different piece. I hadn't understood. This, people would, if they wanted the assistance, they would have to go through the assessment route? That's how we would find out, or?
So technically, yes, but there's opportunities for these homeowners to make payments before it's assessed. So if we order the work, let's say today, October 11th, 2022, it doesn't get assessed till this time next year. So they have almost a full year to make payments. So if we, you know, if they have 25% of a tree, they would have some time to pay that off before it gets assessed. It makes it a cleaner way for us administratively-wise, financially-wise, to go through that to where we can transfer the ARPA funds and then have that other part kind of hang out in the assessment kind of process.
Okay, thank you.
It doesn't mean, because they partake in this program, it doesn't mean that they will be assessed.
Right. I was just thinking that a lot of folks who would have to go the assessment route, pay it off over multiple years if they were paying 100%. If they're only paying 25%, may then opt to, like, oh, I can pay that in at once. But I hear what you're saying of the administrative side of things. It's easier to follow the system that's already in place. And so I'd be comfortable with the recommendations.
Ben, once, just to clarify a little farther, once it's assessed, it goes to the county. Even if it's at 25%, they still would have five years to pay that, 5% interest.
Other comments or questions? Mary?
I guess I had to ask questions, but I hadn't weighed in. I think that the recommendations up here make sense, especially encouraging the replacement trees. I know we can't force it, but as much as we can do to encourage a diversity of different species of trees, that would be helpful as well, so we don't end up back in the same situation 20 years from now.
Thank you. And I'll weigh in as well. I'm comfortable with the recommendations. I actually, I'll say minus number three, the retroactive assistance. I'd like to hear from the rest of council. Is that where you're at as well, Sean? Is minus three?
That would be my preference, just because I think we'll have less of an impact if we include that.
So that's two of us. With the rest of the council, are you fine with all of them? Or where are you at with the three? Ben?
I guess, I don't have super-strong opinions, but I guess I'm confused by that having less of an impact. We're assisting people. The goal is not, in my understanding, the goal is not to encourage more of these trees to come down if they're diseased. The goal is to help cover costs that are unavoidable. The trees are coming down, whether people proactively have them taken down, or they come down in a storm. And I guess to me, it feels somewhat like we'd be not helping the most proactive people. And again, if we, I appreciate all the work that's going to be done to promote this, let people know it's available. But again, if there were a situation where not enough people applied, we already have, I mean, again, we don't know yet how many of them are income-eligible. But if we already have people who have done it, who are eligible for this program we're creating, to me, it would make sense to include them in the process.
Thank you. Feedback, other comments?
I would agree with going retroactively, simply because it's going to be the same income requirement. So it's going to help somebody that needs it. It's not, you know, if somebody's double and triple the income, they won't qualify anyway.
Sean?
So, I mean, just to be clear, they said we have approximately 1,500 eligible properties, or that's the guess. 150 or so will get this. No matter what, there's going to be a lot of people who would be eligible for this who are going to miss out on this. It just doesn't seem any fairer to water down the effect in terms of removing the diseased trees to go retroactive. And I guess I slightly disagree with you, Ben, that, I don't know fully, like, what staff's intent is, if it's helping the greatest financial need or reducing the number of trees. But we don't want trees to come down in a storm. That is really bad because it could, it'll destroy more property, it'll cost those homeowners more. And the trees that have been removed that we might apply retroactive assistance to are already gone. Our objective has been met there. And as I say, I think there's inevitable unfairness, both in that not everybody eligible will get it, and that if we go back one year, there's somebody who did it two years ago who won't get it.
Other comments?
If it helps, and I don't know if it does. We've had the same exact discussion in our office.
What did you?
When to start it. My personal opinion, I think we should go retroactively. We've had trees that have been removed that won't be assessed until next year. And if we can lessen that burden on people that have had to have trees removed now, we should probably do it. And it fits within the federal guidelines. Again, my opinion.
Simon, any thoughts on that?
Not strong ones, so I'll just keep looking to myself.
I mean, I would say my thoughts are not strong either. I mean, this is a great resource and program that unfortunately, you know, we have a lot less support for, to meet the need. So I, to be honest, while I agree with council member, with Sean, I can go either way on that, really.
Okay. Well, since we seem to have a tie, I will say what Krista said makes more sense, that this is currently outstanding, and there is something different about last year than the previous years. So, okay, well, let's just, thumbs up on the staff recommendation.
Yeah, it's tough to not, to have such a big need. Any other comments or questions the staff need, anything else from us on this item?
Nope, I think we're covered. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I just want to say thank you to Ben for initially proposing something, additional use of the ARPA funds, and to staff for going back and thinking, what could we do and for how much? And this is a really meaningful, impactful program and way to kind of partner with that idea.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'll just say this was all Scott, really. And so he did it all, and he's going to keep doing it. So...
Thank you, Scott.
Yeah, we'll start working on the program. And I don't think we need any more formal action from the council on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so now for the next work session. It's with the Transportation Commission, and everyone is now to come up, right, with us? Okay, and it's a joint session?
Two years ago.
Okay. All right. So if the rest of the Transportation Commission wants to come up and join us. And then, just so everybody knows, because I don't know that everyone knows, we had made a decision a little, a while back, that at sessions, we were going to go by first names, which is why, why you awkwardly hear us calling each other by first names, because we're not used to it after so many years. So I will call on you with your first name, too.
It's one.
Okay, looks like we have everyone with us. If you don't, let's just, we'll be sharing the microphones for folks just off and on in the back, and then push this until it turns green to use the mic. But I'll pass it to our trans, to our Public Works Director, Kristin Asher, to kick us off, or straight to Ben? Okay.
Thanks, Maria. I'm just going to pass it off to Ben, our Transportation Engineer, and he will walk us through his presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and Commission, and liaisons. Today, we will talk about speed limits, both locally and what's going on in the Twin Cities, and outlining what kind of options we have today, what traffic looks like today in the city, and then gather feedback and staff direction on what more information does the Commission and Council need to make decisions as we move forward in this process. So I'll start with the end, where staff is recommending a default speed limit of 25 miles an hour citywide. There are exceptions for 30 miles an hour, and then one road, 77th Street, at 35 miles an hour, and then alleys remain at 10 miles an hour. That's state law today. There are a few approaches that folks can use to change speed limits, and then I'll go through all four of these. The only thing I'll note is that these can be combined. There are different ways they can be combined, and it's really, it's not one-size-fits-all. It can be made specific to our context. So our current speed limits today, state statute, is a default speed limit of 30 miles an hour. And so that's nearly all of our roads. That's everything in orange on the screen. We have a few at 35 miles an hour. That's in the neon green. Most of these are county roads, which we are not able to change at this time. These possible changes we're talking about today are for local streets only. Our 35, that's a local road, is 77th Street. And then east of Lyndale and 77th is 40, in the red there. And then there are a select few streets that are at 25 miles an hour, in blue. So one method of setting speed limits is just a blanket, everything is the same. And so in this instance, St. Anthony Village, speed limit, they use 25 for all of their local roads. Slightly different is setting a default, but kind of putting things in tiers or categories. And these can be based on, sometimes it's how big the roads are, how fast people drive on them, how much or how many vehicles are on them, also kind of land use or other landmarks different cities have used. So the one on screen is from St. Paul from 2020. And they made their distinction mostly between 20 and 25 based on their minor and major streets. Of course, they have got a couple other large ones, like Aiden Mill Road, which is essentially a highway, but they kind of set that off to the side. Another method is slow zones. And so these are smaller areas within a city. Generally, these are at the neighborhood scale, where all of the streets within those limits are put at a lower speed limit. So in these two examples, these were done at 20 miles an hour. And often, these are paired with other traffic calming methods, things like neighborhood traffic circles or the mini roundabouts in the middle of intersections. Sometimes, they are changing the width of roads. It varies widely, or widely, city to city. Another is isolating certain corridors and saying, you know, we're going to leave everything else as is right now, but we really want to focus on this one street that's most often a very high-speed road. And so this is the method that Rochester, Minnesota, started on, where they will go back to reconstruction projects and then take a look at their speed limits there. Before, kind of get further, any kind of questions on just the overall methods, before we go into some of the details for Richfield specifically?
Questions from council or commissioners? No. All right.
Okay. So overall, some of the things that we've been doing from Public Works is taking a look at our last five years. Folks from the Transportation Commission, these are used from one of our past meetings, just to show these to the council. So over the past five years, crashes have decreased in the city, and this is more of a regional trend, or at least in the Twin Cities. With this, we have had increasingly more crashes on our county roads. And then at the same time, the kind of small dotted line at the bottom, some of these have been in our, more of our local roads as well, the ones that are not the busiest. So that's the difference between state aid and other on here.
We do have a question, Mary?
Yes.
So, Ben, I was looking at these two graphs, and I was trying to figure out, how much of this do you think is because of reduced traffic because of the pandemic? And how much of it do you think might be because of, like, road design and traffic calming stuff that we've done? Do we have an estimate?
I was wondering that, too.
Yep. So not a, not like a certain percent estimate. A lot of what I've been doing to look at this is trying to look at the beginnings, the '27, '20, '18, and then where we're at now. Everyone had a big dip in 2019 to 2020 due to the pandemic, absolutely. And I think that, overall, it has been trending down. It'll continue to do so. And just some of that will be rebounded back as folks kind of get back to more driving.
Mary?
Okay. Looking at pedestrian bicyclist crashes, these, in total, have decreased over the last five years. And with that, pedestrian crashes have remained relatively the same, however, we've decreased our bicyclist crashes. Looking at our fatal and serious injury crashes within the region, we are meeting regional goals and state goals for fatal crashes on our roads, however, they do still occur, do still occur. And that is something that we still continue to make sure that doesn't On that, serious injury crashes, we do not match our peers. And this is something that staff will continue to look at as we, you know, go through the speed limit process, but then in our other public works, projects and planning as we go through here. Because this was, this was a shocking number to me as I go through, that we just do have more crashes. And I think some of this will improve as, this is, the numbers up here are a five-year outlook. And as we've had some of our big transformational projects, like 66, Portland, and others, this may fall closer in line with our neighbors, but this is something we'll continue to look at. As part of our background research for speed limits, we took... As part of our background research for speed limits, we took, we took a look at all of the existing speed limit or speed data that we had. And a lot of this is done between ourselves and public safety through either requests from neighbors, thinking that, or, you know, seeing that traffic is too fast on the road. Some of these are also from our state aid counts, something that we do every couple of years, checking how many car, how many vehicles are going through our streets for the state. And then some of these are a part of our regular construction projects. And what we have found is that most folks on our quiet roads, our average neighborhood roads, are going under the speed limit. Shown up here is a median speed of 24 miles, 24 miles an hour on, on roads that have a speed limit of 30. Which, to me, this was great news, that folks are already going under the speed limit. And this is something that we saw, you know, citywide on all of these kind of smaller roads. And then also, even on our larger roads, a lot of folks are also going under the speed limit with that 28 and 29 for the more busy roads. Something that we also found was that the availability of this speed data trended towards white neighborhoods. And in taking a look at it, outside of our state aid counts, which are on our roads kind of citywide, a lot of the data that we had available was due to resident request. And shown on the screen with race data, as well as the homes with racial covenants, these matched up pretty well with white neighborhoods. And so that was something to point out with this, as we kind of move forward with it. Anything from the background data, as far as questions?
Simon?
Thank you. I, thank you for a great presentation. The biggest, most concerning item, of course, is that we have more, twice as many serious injuries almost than, than the state average, and almost three times as much as our peers. And so I just, I, I thought you just mentioned, like, we're not quite sure why, but we're looking at that. And I was wondering if you had any speculation, even as we're looking at something that, that is meant to provide more safety. I just, that just wondered if you had any more comments on that.
This is something that we're continuing to look at. I think that, as kind of showed in the graph earlier, that a lot of our large crashes are happening on our largest roads. And so those are often county roads, however, not always. And that's, that's kind of the, the most that I've got right now. But that's something that we will continue to be working on.
Who's near?
From that data for the serious injury, it would be nice to know where those 5.6 accidents occurred, like which roads they were on, whether they were on the county roads or if they were on the sides.
And that's something that we can get. And that's something that we can bring forward to the next time we, we talk.
Any other comments or questions, Ben?
Thank you. I was just, I think my biggest wondering throughout this, but haven't you just passed the slide talking about the, the median speed? I, I have no data to this, but I would have to imagine that some of the most, at least destructive, dangerous crashes are people who are not traveling the median speed. It doesn't, I mean, this is per thousand, well, less than 1,000 vehicles a day, but it only takes one to cause problems, of course. And so I know the, the primary question we're asking is about reducing speed limits. But I, I guess I'm, whether it's appropriate in this work session or not, would also love to have a conversation at some point about getting people to follow the speed limits we do have, that that consistently is what I hear the most complaints about. We come to staff, and oftentimes, it's people wanting more stop signs. Staff correctly lets them know that stop signs are not speed deterrents, but then we don't, we don't entertain options like some other cities have of speed bumps, or we've not done the, we've done some of the bump out things. I haven't seen as, as much, certainly as like some Minneapolis neighborhoods are having. But I, I guess I'm just wondering if the question about speed limits is only part of the answer and what we're doing in terms of getting people then to actually follow them.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Speed limits is one, is one tool in a large toolbox. And we, we brought this to the council and, and the commission because it's something that we now have the ability to do. This only, this only came in 2019. And so for that, that's kind of why this came in. But then in addition, I just lost the second point. But, thank you.
Other questions or comments? David?
So, based on what I just heard and what I was thinking initially, I wonder if this is an exercise in futility. You know, and it's anecdotally that I believe everybody is driving faster and, and that creates a situation. So Chief, if, are there more people speeding?
We have a pretty robust traffic unit when we go out and obviously take the complaints. Our complaint process is pretty detailed from a complaint process to go out evaluating the area, then do education, then enforcement, then do the speed signs. I would agree with Ben. I think that we see a lot more speeding on the main thoroughfares, the county roads, and that's where our officers usually are located. We get a lot of the complaints from the business community and also from the residents. So, I mean, we write our share of speeding tickets. Being here as long as I have, it's not even close to when the roads were the way they were 10 years, 15 years ago. And Public Works has put in the traffic calming on the main thoroughfare, so, and, and the county as well. So we're not writing as many, but we're still writing some, especially on the main thoroughfares. But we do get a lot of complaints in the neighborhoods because people get frustrated, you know, whether they're going to work, whether they're coming home from work, and they peer off on the arteries into the, into the neighborhoods, and that's where we get the complaints. So.
You know, despite my negativism, you know, to have the psychological effect of having a lower speed limit probably has an effect on some people. But, you know, as it's been pointed out, it's the county roads that are permeating our community that people go too fast. So, so let's withdraw from the county.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Okay, looks like we can keep going.
So then I'll just go through what the staff recommendation is with a little more context. So then it is a default 25 mile an hour on any road. And so these, I, I just went to a random, random block to take a look. And so this looks something like this. For a road to be considered for 30 miles an hour, we had a couple of conditions, at least in this draft form. One is that we're looking at half-mile segment, segment or more. And this is to, to be more consistent, to make sure that as you're driving along the same road, it's not continually changing every other block. The next was more than 1,000 vehicles a day. And so that's kind of separating our quiet streets from our more thoroughfares. And from the speed data that we showed earlier, folks going on those 1,000-plus vehicle a day roads are going faster. And then for, then third, was looking at the actual median speed of those roads. And so here, that was looking at a median speed of at least 30 miles an hour. And again, this is 76th along the regional trail at Bryant. Then for a 35 miles an hour, to meet this, we had, it has to meet a, the criteria we just talked about for 30 miles an hour, and then have it be classified as an arterial road. And so for our context, this is 77th Street slash 66 as you get towards 35W. And that is the only road that meets this at this time. And so here is the, a map of showing it in general. And the point that I wanted to make again, similar to what we had with the traffic counts, is that on its face, we still end up with higher speed limits in our more diverse neighborhoods. And this is just a function right now of that's where folks are driving the fastest. However, as we consider these new speed limits, you know, we already have some things on our CAP targeting or looking to calm traffic in these neighborhoods, like, like along Diagon and Bloomington, and some of the stuff we're doing with Safe Route School on 70th Street. However, thinking about a new policy like this, what, what could we do more? What could we pair with this? And so that's something that staff and more folks can think about, too. And then something on the backend is, you know, these speed limits don't have to be rigid. They can change. Reasons up here to consider that is if we're already doing road construction, talked about that before. Some of that neighborhood or corridor level traffic calming, like those other, like those slow zones or the corridor studies from before, and then also demonstrated lower driver speeds. So in the event that maybe when we were looking at these, folks were driving much faster because there was a detour from highway construction or something else. And if we show that, hey, they were going much lower, then we can change that, too. That's all that I have on here. Happy to entertain questions and discussion.
Jim?
Yeah, hey, Ben. On the series crashes, one of the things that I'd be concerned about, and I think you may want to take a look at, is the diversity map. Where are they occurring? Because it helps you understand if there's a problem, you know, if, speed might not be an issue. But if it is an issue, and it is constant, there might be a relationship between the speed and our diverse areas. And if that's where the crashes are, of course, we need to maybe take a look at, does Diagon or 73rd, does that go to 25 versus 30?
Sean?
Thanks. So I've got, just want to share where I'm thinking about this right now, and I have a few questions. So first off, thanks to staff for the work so far. It's good that a lot has gone into this. And I think it's really important. And as I've seen other cities moving forward with this, I'm glad that we're here at this point. But in general, I feel like the proposed speeds are just too high across the board. I'm particularly just concerned with the base speed being 25 miles per hour rather than 20. And I'm also concerned with the recommendation of several of those 30 mile per hour streets. So the application of the methodology that you have is using the existing speeds. It's, it's thorough, and I don't think it leads us to good policy all the same. It's, it's really asking, what are the speeds that drivers are driving today? And then reinforcing that speed is sort of the new limit. And I think when we're, we're making a policy decision to change our speed limits, I think the better question should be what speeds are appropriate, not what speeds have drivers chosen to drive today. Because I don't, I don't think residents are happy with the speeds. And I brought a prop, and it's relevant, I promise. So it's a 20 is plenty sign from Minneapolis. And I brought it in, not just because I'm saying 20 is plenty, although I am. No, I'll leave it here. So I actually got this from a Richfield resident at National Night Out 2021. I was on a block, and they had all these signs like lining their Richfield block. And I was like, well, what, what are all these Minneapolis signs doing here? And I talked to a resident, and it was like, well, you know, you know, Richfield is still 30. Technically, the signs don't really mean anything. And she said, yeah, she knows, but she wants to encourage people to drive slower. And so she, yeah, she took a bunch of signs from Minneapolis. Don't do that. They deserve to keep their signs in there to go to their resident. But I, I thought that was really instructive, and I think it's a good way that I think we should be thinking about this, is we shouldn't just be reflecting the current speeds. We should be like actively challenging drivers to drive slower, like that resident was roguely on her own block. And I, I particularly think, you know, compared to other cities that have done this, so Minneapolis, St. Paul both did 20, St. Louis Park did 20. And I think of our side streets where almost none of them have sidewalks, there's a shared space, we have the minimum amount of protection. The idea that it would be safer, in our opinion, as a city, for people to go 5 miles per hour faster on our streets where kids are sharing the road with high-speed SUVs or, or big SUVs, I just don't think is, is reasonable. We, we know that, you know, we, I think Dave said it's an exercise in futility, because I know that not everybody's going to set, you know, follow the speed limit, whether it's 20 or 25. But I do think we know the 20 mile per hour is significantly safer. I was looking at St. Louis Park's policy and saw their presentation, and I'll pass this handout out from one of their PowerPoints, which your half is likely to get seriously injured or killed at 20 miles per hour than 25. And that's, that's significant. So I think anything we can do to bring people down, I've got like 10 of you, so not everybody will get one, but anything we can do to get people down closer to that, I think is really important. So I suspect this might have been Ben's PowerPoint, but I didn't, there's no name on it, so I'm not gonna.
Yes, I did make that graphic.
So anyway, with that in mind, I, I am curious why staff are coming to us with 25 miles per hour, given that the suburbs that have done that are a lot more sort of cul-de-sacs and kind of a different built form, whereas St. Louis Park, Minneapolis, that has a lot more grid like we do, went with 20. So could, could you talk a little bit about why, why you're coming to us with 25?
Yes. So apart from, apart from the existing speeds that we already showed, I think the, the largest difference between our context and that of Minneapolis and St. Paul, and even St. Louis Park, while we are also urban, our streets are generally wider than all of them. I think I remember from, for instance, St. Louis Park, their average, average road width was like 28 feet wide. And often ours is like 34 plus. And then another part of that is how on-street parking is used in those cities. So often, and I'll use St. Louis Park as an example again, many blocks are half, like half taken up with parking either on one side or both sides, but 50% used. And I suppose anecdotally, as I've gone through our blocks here, that's much, much less here. And one of the things that on-street parking does is that it kind of narrows a driver's focus. And with more things kind of in their, in their view, they're gonna, they're going to drive slower. That's kind of the same concept as having street trees or having other kind of things in, in the right of way there. So from, from like a built form aspect, that's one of the main differences that I see. And I think that also drives why we have higher speeds on our, on our roads here.
Yeah, and that's a good point, Ben. I, I hope that is considered as we do rebuild local streets and making those changes. I, I still worry that ultimately, we're kind of setting a goal for the community. And I, I think our goal should be slower. I understand that we're up against more, and it might be a little bit harder of a sell to get people there. I, I do still think it's important. And then just one specific comment, much more narrow, but I, I do think 77 should be set the same as the other arterials. It's particularly striking that 76, I believe by the standards you have west of Penn, would meet the same standard for 35 that you set for 77. Again, I appreciate that road feels very fast. It was designed for speed. I, I think we should be challenging people to go slower. It certainly would not be the only four-lane divided roadway with a 30 zone. Thank you.
Thank you. I, that deserves a mic drop in bringing it. Okay, I know it's about Ben, and then I'll go to David. Go ahead, Ben.
Um, I appreciate Sean bringing this up. I did not have the data, but was going to ask the exact same question. There, there is a big difference between 20 and 25. I would also push for, for 20. I mean, looking, looking at our grid, this doesn't have the, the county roads highlighted. That will still be 35. Like, there are plenty of places to go where if you are just trying to go as fast as you can, go there. I think the lower we make every other road, the more we will reduce people wanting to duck through those for various reasons. So I, I think generally, everything is good. We're moving in the right direction. I would not put anything higher than it is here. The other specific ones I would think about lowering, that I've heard speed concerns from residents are, well, the least one, just because it's on my ward, so I don't hear from people, but I'd be curious if Sean has heard from folks about 64th. You know, part of that was just during construction. People were concerned about the speed there. To me, that's not that far from 66. Again, would seem we'd want to direct people to a road that's designed for more cars, and just make 64th like every other residential street. This is maybe more of a stretch, but I would propose the same for This is maybe more of a stretch, but I would propose the same for Twelfth and Seventy-third and Diagonal. That we've got Seventieth, Portland, Cedar, Seventy-sixth and Seventy-seventh, those are not that far away. Twelfth is by far the street I get the most complaints about speeding on. And then Seventy-third, I live in the tiny section of my ward that goes west of Portland and go on a bunch of walks past Seventy-third. Having east or west of Portland, it is marked as every other road, but because it's different east of there, people treat it like it's a, like it's a Portland, like it's a Seventieth. I think the more we can give the inclination that like, this is just another neighborhood street, to me would be important. Diagonal, I know we've just had several conversations via email about what's going on around Centennial. Similar dynamic to Twelfth, I've heard a bunch of concerns about the intersection of Twelfth and Seventieth being right by the school. I think if you have Twelfth faster, when people get off the freeway, see the speed limit, they're gonna go that speed through town. So I, I just think it makes sense to have our big grid be slightly faster, but we don't need as many fast streets in the middle of neighborhoods.
David?
Let me continue to stir the pot. You know, Richfield in a big portion of the city has this checkerboard pattern of stop signs. And how fast can you go in two blocks? So, you know, those, those streets, people are theoretically going slower anyway. The checkerboard pattern of stop signs is always something that bothered me anyway, because it's like a cried wolf. You know, you know that it's there, it, you don't think it's important, so you don't make the full stop anyway. So there's a topic for another discussion.
Thank you. Simon?
Thank you. Just a couple, a couple of comments and, and then a question. One comment, similar to Sixty-Fourth, this might be less intuitive. Sixty-fifth Street is a high-volume street, but also a highly-walked street and one with a lot of seniors and a lot of folks with disabilities. And I would just advocate for Sixty-fifth as a consideration for not, not faster, but slower streets, especially as a cut-through. I don't know that it serves a strong policy purpose to, to increase the speed there. But I recognize, just by the data, it is highly-used. And that's maybe how it got there. So I just, from a lived experience perspective, I might advocate for that to be lower. I also heard mention that Sixty-sixth Street down by Thirty-five W might be eligible for thirty-five miles an hour. And I know it's a county road, I just wasn't sure if that was the, the case.
Yeah, we cannot touch county roads for this.
And then I just want to echo what, what Sean said about twenty miles an hour. And, and I think something long-term that we might consider, too, is that we have teenagers that are always learning how to drive and always entering into the, into the driving world. And if they enter in knowing and creating a habit, even if it's harder for older folks to, to change it over time, I think there's a value in teenagers recognizing, oh, I've just only ever driven twenty miles an hour in a neighborhood. And that seems like a great habit for Richfield teens to, to embrace. And then my, my last, my last comment, or my, it's actually a question for, for our chief. Jay, I was just wondering, your, this ultimately falls on the shoulders of your team to, to enforce or not enforce. And I wondered if you had thoughts either about the level or if it were lower, if it were twenty miles an hour, are there things that we could do to ease the burden on our, on our officers and set the expectation so they don't feel like they, they're, they're just getting a bigger mandate?
Well, I think, thanks, Simon. I think i- if it stays at what staff recommended, I don't think it's really gonna change much of our enforcement complaints. I mean, we have a complaint process that we follow. My concern in talking with my, my peer in St. Louis Park, who actually used to be a Richfield CSO, so he worked the streets of Richfield for a long time, and he's currently the chief of police. And he did say his enforcement structure changed dramatically when they dropped to twenty miles an hour. More complaints come in, more staff time is needed to go out and obviously look at those complaints and do enforcement, do education. So it's, it's going to take us more staff time if it is changed to twenty miles an hour. And, you know, that's based upon experience that he gave to me. So, I mean, obviously, as the chief, that's a concern of mine, because, you know, we're down staff right now, and, and it is a struggle. So how much time, I don't know. I mean, he thought it was pretty significant, but that's basically what, what he recommended to me would be the biggest concern, is it will change our enforcement if it does drop down to twenty.
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna go to Dan, and then I saw Mary, and then Who's Nia?
Thank you, Mayor, and, and everybody for the, the presentation. I just have a couple of thoughts. My, my biggest concern is with the orange lines on the map. And we've already established that even a five-mile per hour difference in speed makes a big difference on your outcome if you're involved in a crash. You know, so if you're walking, it's something like a fifty percent of serious injury chance at thirty miles per hour, where just down to twenty-five miles per hour, that drops to like twenty percent or something like that. And then I look at some of the orange lines on the map. For instance, Seventy-third to Diagonal, and it gets me to thinking, I can drive along Sixty-sixth Street end-to-end and cover all of Richfield in less than five minutes. So from a driver perspective, what does that extra five miles per hour get me on Seventy-third Street for that ten blocks or whatever it is? It gets me one minute where the safety outcomes for somebody walking or a kid playing in the street, that's life and death. So I, I just don't see the, you know, I look at the, the previous crash data, most of our injuries were actually on Lyndale. And since then, it's been rebuilt, so it's, it's in theory safer, I think it is. But I just don't see a, a functional value in having that overlay network of higher streets. It's also true that more traffic volume on those streets equals more exposures for crashes, so more opportunities for crashes. So that's where our greatest need is, to slow things down. And, and that's kind of my two cents.
Thank you, Dan, and then Mary.
Thank you. I was also thinking about, it was mentioned earlier, and I ought to reinforce, I don't think we should be setting the speed limits just because that's what people are driving now. It seems backwards. I think we need to be thinking about safety. And I am mostly concerned about those orange lines, because most of those orange lines could probably go to twenty-five and just be consistent and say it's twenty-five unless you're on a county road. And there are plenty of county roads, whether it's, you know, Sixty-sixth or Nicollet or something where you can get around. But if we could reduce it everywhere else, it would be much simpler and it would be safer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Who's Nia?
Yes, I echo what everybody's saying. I think there's a couple of questions that I have, and maybe it would take further research to find the answers. But one is definitely on if there's any data on the people that have been stopped for speeding and then what those speeds were and where they were located. And if there's any, because I know, like, across the street, across the state, we have different disparities. So I don't know if there's any disparities with that data when it comes to people of color and others that are driving. Because I would still be concerned with that if the speed limit were lowered. They would still be pulled over more often than others. So I would just want to see if there's even data from St. Louis Park or Minneapolis on that as well. And then I was wondering for the speed limit signs in the project that we're discussing right now, is that under the same budget as, you mentioned that there is a couple of proposed projects coming up where there's going to be bump outs or different things created in the, on those streets that would make people slow down? Are those individual projects that have individual budgets? And then is this already a part of this year's budget or next year's budget?
Thank you. So I'll do the, address the first question first. As far as I'm aware, at the state level, data like race is not collected for traffic stops. And I'll, and I'll look for the chief to expand on that more on the local level. But I, I'm aware, I don't believe that that's collected at any level. So that's something that we don't have access to. And then as far as the second question, so to implement, you know, a plan like this or any other, we do have in the CIP for part of, part of twenty-twenty-three and then twenty-twenty-four, a total of two hundred thousand. And a lot of that is to implement signs, to change some of our traffic signals, as some of the timing there assumes a certain kind of speed limit, as well as education campaign and other things. When we talk about other projects, those will be separate budgets. And if we end up changing a speed limit for any kind of road, that would be, that would be addressed in the, within the budget of that specific project.
Really briefly, before I go to continued comments, are there people who have not yet spoken on this item that would like to share something? Okay, I'll jump in then. So briefly, I, I'm also interested in looking at twenty miles per hour. I know that there's, there, there's implications of that. But it, from what I'm hearing and, and kind of where I'm at as well, is it sounds like there's a lot of interest in this. We see the need. But even looking at slower, what, and then again, what, what that would mean for enforcement, but also strategically looking at slower on some of these higher-speed roads. So I'm interested in that as well. I know that, that's a different discussion that we, that staff have to prepare for. But it sounds like there's several people interested in that. Number two, I just want to thank you so much for the racial equity overlay. I think that's really important, and I want to acknowledge that that was done in both of the work sessions by staff. And staff are not only applying those assessments, but then they're using that in decision-making. That is then coming out with different solutions where equity is centered. So I just want to say thank you, that's huge. I really appreciate it. And I would love to see all of our departments, when they come to work sessions, be saying, we took this into account. Here's what it means, or, and here's how it changed in, in what we're presenting to today. So I just want to applaud and thank you so much to the Public Works Department. The next thing I wanted to say is, looking at those serious accidents, I'd love to get much more information and come back to us with like a deeper analysis of where they're happening and why. And then lastly, in this area where you do see the concentration of, well, looking at the serious crashes and then overlaying it and having a little more understanding with the racial equity component. And then, like you said, I just want to reinforce, I would like to see, like, some mitigation plans that do include traffic calming in, in, with those things, once you have more, more information in those areas. So I think those were all the items. So we have a couple of minutes, and I saw several hands up, so if folks can be brief with their additional comments. Sean?
I just wanted to make some clarification. First off, I, I appreciate all the support and interest in twenty miles an hour. I, I guess I just wanted to state, I personally would be comfortable with, with some of the ones that are identified as thirty going to twenty-five if we were to go with twenty as the base speed, so it could be a higher speed. And I am curious, because I did hear, like, from Ben, that you want it to be the same as a neighborhood street. Like, if, if the base speed were twenty, are you okay with, like, Seventy-third Diagonal at twenty-five? Is, is my clarification.
No. I, part of what I'm trying to get at is, I don't think a five-mile per hour difference is, people, no one goes exactly the speed limit. People are within two or three miles of the speed limit. That if I, I don't know, I feel like the fewer options we have makes it more clearer. And so if everything is twenty, unless something is marked at thirty or thirty-five, that, to me, feels like a very clear distinction. Whereas if you start throwing twenty-fives in there, it feels blurrier. My, my very brief comment, since you already asked me, is just future conversation. Would love to talk more about enforcement, love the idea about calming. Just want to make sure that our, our equity analysis does not turn into, and I'm not hearing staff say this, especially not from the enforcement angle, but there would be an approach that is, oh, we need to keep these more diverse areas safer. Let's do more tickets there, that that actually ends up with an inequitable outcome. So just look forward to that conversation as we get closer to implementing things.
Thank you. And I actually saw Simon first, and then I'll go to Jim after.
Thank you. I just, I was, I was surprised at Seventy-seventh Street that that's actually a road that's not a state road. And so I was encouraged to know that we have some influence over that. And it's, it's driven like a freeway by a lot of folks, which is a little circular, because then it's designed like a freeway. And then, so it's designed like a freeway, and, and we have sound barriers that are freeway-type sound barriers, but they don't protect most of the people. Most of the people who live right next to that freeway-esque road don't have any barrier there. And so I'm just really encouraged to know that that's something that we have influence over. And so without giving it a specific, well, I mean, I recommend that we, that we consider something lower than thirty-five miles an hour. We're talking about a two, a two-mile road. And it, it's, I think there are some, some deficiencies in how it was built. And thinking about going slower there could be really prudent. And I know we don't have control over all the stoplights. I've advocated with MinDOT for, for years to change the stoplight that on Seventy-seventh, when it crosses over Thirty-five W, because there's a school right there. And it's an incline, and it gets icy in the winter. And so things like that, I'm just glad to know that it's in our control, and I ask that we think about lowering the speed.
Thank you, Simon. Jim?
Yeah, the, one point I wanted to point out is, when you say you're at twenty-five medium, that means half the people are going slower than that. And then half, and that make, and then the other half is above it. So you have a, to say that people are going twenty-five and it's not safe, well, maybe a lot of people are already driving that twenty-one, twenty-two, which kind of seems like what the roads are designed for.
Thank you. In the last couple of minutes, any other comments? And then to staff, that was a very robust discussion. We want to thank you for all the research. I know this has been a priority area that we've talked, we've talked about this for years. So it's very exciting to have this discussion tonight. Do you have any more questions for us? Do you want to just do a brief summary of kind of what you heard and the next steps?
Yeah, so what I, so what I heard is that there is continued interest for twenty miles an hour. And so that's something that staff can look at and bring back on our thoughts about that after some more research. Also, look, requested for additional information on some of the crash data that we've been looking at and more about what is behind the serious injury crashes. Then after that, some of those, there was some that were just street-specific, so Seventy-seventh and others that we can certainly look at. And then after, after that, I'm not sure if there was additional items on top of that other than enforcement, which we'll be talking about in future discussions.
I think another one I heard was not just from twenty-five to twenty, but also looking at the thirty and maybe thirty-five mile and seeing, looking at that as well.
Understood.
Any other items, I think, big ones? Okay. Thank you so much. This was super informational, very helpful. Thank you for our commissioners for participating and taking the lead, and I will adjourn our work session. Thank you.
Thank you.